If anybody color coordinated pins? You can make it fun. No, like we could do color coordinated pins, but you could have neon green pin for clients. It's a river. And then for your literacy, you could have like blue. You can add red.
River right now, you know, I had to cross over today. Yeah, it's ice chunk flows going down it right now. Yeah.
We're organizing the hockey game on Lake Avalon for Saturday, if anybody wants to come.
Really?
Yeah.
Dates?
Better not do it Saturday because it's supposed to be 50 degrees.
You're right. Friday morning, first thing, Friday morning, first thing, put the word out, Jesse, please.
I just looked at weather radar, it looks like about 6:40. There's a heck of a snow front gonna hit Tulsa about 6:40.
Tulsa gets Bella Vista gets.
Larry, we're waiting for what? Still have four minutes.
1814, I could have walked across the Arkansas River. Doggone it.
Well, they crossed in wagon, teams and wagons.
No kidding. Wow.
Up in Canada where we have our home, a part of the Ottawa River freezes like that every and they actually have a road built across the ice and it lasts for about two months. Incredible.
Only way to get across, probably.
Well, it's a lot, it's a lot faster, otherwise you'd have to go all the way down, catch a bridge, then all the way back up. It's an island. Oh, there's Jim coming in, okay.
Trying to get connected, he's been on there for a minute.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring up a matter at the end of the, at about the end of the meeting.
Okay, I think this is gonna be a three hour buster, guys.
No kidding. Well.
All right, I've added John.
You bring lunch?
Call for pizza.
They can't see you.
You're kidding, what's gonna be three hours?
We could get Dairy Queen.
Don't joke us. Could be four.
Yes. I thought I saw Larry Kelly, I thought that was Larry Kelly I saw a moment ago.
Yeah, Larry's here.
You did, didn't I, Jerry?
Why, why are we allowing Larry on? I mean, gosh.
That's because he wants to show his beard. See or hear me? Can anybody see or hear Wasney?
We hear ya.
We hear you and don't see you.
I, yeah, I don't see you guys either. I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Maybe that's my thing.
It's called a malfunction.
Well, I get a lot of those. I keep hitting join with video, but nothing happened.
We probably could put this space heater there. We could put it here in the middle of the floor by the
Hey, Mayor.
Everybody be careful, mute your phones if you're not you're not part. I'm just scared.
Somebody's talking about space heaters, guys.
Okay, I'm scared somebody's gonna say something they didn't need to say.
Now, we hear a background conversation about space heaters.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say something about Larry Kelly, but I won't do it now.
You got them pretty good already.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Anybody know what I'm supposed to do to get the rest of you guys in this picture?
Yeah, there's a drop down window at the top and then you'll find a box of nine squares in it and you hit that and you'll get everybody.
Guess what, that ain't done.
I don't think he's even got out or video to begin with. Hey, Mayor, is Eric or John the host of the meeting or is it you?
John is on as the host.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
I noticed the first, the first item is the septic. I've, I've got the presentation I did for the builders and real estate agents. Okay. If it comes to that, I could share a few of those slides if the questions get that deep. Okay, we're actually gonna start with two other ones first. Okay, then we'll move over to that.
Yeah, well, hey, guys, I can hear you, but I can't see you, so let's go.
Okay, it's 5:30.
I have thirty feet, Mayor.
I know, yeah, it's 5:30, so we'll start and welcome everyone to the city council work session for the city of Bella Vista on Tuesday, February the 16th. I'm going to ask you to move over under new business to item number C. This is Carrie's. This is something that we do every year, Jerry, this will be new to you because you weren't doing it back when you were last on council. And Carrie, I'm gonna turn it over to you just to give us a highlight of what's going on here.
Okay, basically, this is the restricted fund budget, which is different from the general fund. It's not operating expenses at all, it's just the individual restricted funds that you'll see at the end of every monthly financial statement. Very last page of every publication shows each department head what their restricted fund balances are. That means is these funds are not spent on operating expenses, they're only allowed to be spent on what the grantor who provided those funds intended for them to spend them on. And so we wait until after the end of the year, see what our ending balances are, so we'll know what we have to spend and to add to the 2021's expected revenues. And we zero it out in the third column, you'll see expenditures the 2021 budget expenditures, and those are designed and budgeted to leave us with a zero balance at the end of the year.
Could you just quickly, please? If you're still there for some reason and I've got over here.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, there we go. Could you please just very quickly tell council what the departments are, 15, 20, etc.?
Yes, community development has some trails. Restricted funds, one from legacy racing, one from the remainder of Bella Vista Foundation contribution. They also were allowed to restrict any lean revenue that they receive from placing on properties. They were allowed to use that for things like demolitions and stuff like that. Police department has a drug fund and then they were also allowed to sequester their fingerprint fees as well into this restricted fund in order to use in their own internal drug fund. Let's see here, of course, they also have the jail, jail fees that are spent to pay the Benton County jail invoice that they receive every month. Let's see, they have a slight balance left in a car seats fund. Then they have their general donations fund. And let's see, actually, the crimes against children grant, this shouldn't be on here, we used this up at the last minute of 2020. And then they have the step grant, which is not new. And that's on a reimbursement based basis only, so there's no beginning balance in that. Then the fire department has their donations, general donations. They receive several different types of grants, the Act 833, the AAA grant, the trauma grant, Firewise grant. And then again, they have a slight remainder of what's called the safer grant that reimburses them for the nine safer employees that were hired about three and a half years ago. They have hazmat revenue fund as well, and then the library has three different restricted fund accounts, general use, teen and adult and electronic media. And then we get into the Walton financial, Walton.
Family Foundation?
Family Foundation, mhm. Or three different, three different grants that they provided us, one for the Central or Sugar Creek Trails, one for the Sugar Creek Bridge. And then the Blowing Springs Grant, Blowing Springs slash Mercy Way Bridge Grant. And we still have the RDOT Mercy Way Bridge, three phases that are not complete, well, two phases, right away construction phase for the bridge grants from RDOT. And then another grant from RDOT, RDOT called the TAP grant that's helping with the Mercy Way Bridge.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions at all? Steve?
Mayor, I just wanna ask one just for understanding purposes, and I'll use one as an example, Carrie, if you would, the first fire department, which is Department 20, that's an example of one, let's see, is it the first one?
30 is the fire department, Steve.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, first one on 30 then, the donations FD, so it's, it has a beginning balance of $30,000. And then
That's right.
And then it says budgeted revenues for the year $6,000. So where does that 6,000 come from? Does that come just out operating?
No, they, where does the 6,000 revenue come from?
Yes.
From donations that residents make.
So they, so from previous years, we've got a balance of 30,954, we'll add another 6,000 to it and then we kinda just zeroed out, we assume it's gonna be spent in the year, I guess, is that what we do?
Yes, that's what we're assuming, uh huh.
Okay, okay, and then maybe it will and maybe it won't, if it won't, if it doesn't all get spent, then we'll have a beginning balance for next year too.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for Carrie? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, thank you, Carrie, enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Yeah, drive from, drive over to the kitchen, will you, and get dinner?
Oh, I can't see that because I can't see anybody, so I can hear you.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. So move on now to item F, again on the second page, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Silence Springs pursuant to a state contract for the purchase of a 21 Chevrolet four by four pickup truck not to exceed 32,532,90. And that's for the street department. Mike, are you on the call, I don't see you.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, it, it's pretty straightforward. In your deck, there is a spec sheet, so if you have any questions, well, wait until Friday or next Monday morning, so we can get through this next snow, but I know that he'll be more than happy to answer. And of course, this is in the budget. So I'll just move from that, it's, it's it's pretty and Doug, I know that you want to get on the road, so let's go back to old business, if I may, the first is an ordinance on septic, this was tabled from December on second reading and at that time, we decided that Doug Tapp would have an opportunity to start pulling some of the stakeholder holders together to talk about this. And so I draw your attention to an email that Doug sent to you on Friday, February the 12th, where he was talking about some of the outcomes of the meeting that he had with participants that were realtors, the Department of Health, and Northwest Arkansas Builders Association. So there was a really good representation of people in attendance, Larry Kelly also had an email in there and he's with us tonight. Doug also had a discussion with Tom Judson and we also have Linda Lloyd's email from January 28th. And then one from Shannon Kisperek, who's the executive officer of Northwest Arkansas Home Builders Association. So there was some really, really good input, Nathan Frost also sent us last Friday. He was asking some questions, whatnot, and brought up some interesting points. So Doug, I'm gonna hand it over to you, I'm, I must confess after reading this, I'm not sure that we're at the point yet where we've got enough meat to put something into an actual ordinance, because I see that, you know, there's some blanks in the ordinance, not sure if you need more time or not, but I'm gonna turn the, the chair over to you and let you address, please.
Thank you, Mayor, it looks like we've lost Larry. I don't see him on here and he was gonna summarize, help summarize that meeting, but
He's there, Larry, Larry, which Larry?
Is he there?
Oh, Larry.
Larry Kelly. I may be overlooking him, but
I don't see him.
I'll try not to rehash everything in the email that I sent you, but since, since you all met and just tabled this last time, I have met with builders, real estate agents, several of whom have worked in the area for decades. Spent a bunch of time visiting with septic designers, several people from the Arkansas Department of Health. And so a couple of weeks ago, we all got together on a Zoom call and just laid out the problems that we're facing in Bella Vista with the plans that are getting submitted to the health department and then the plans that are getting submitted to CDS. And then the result the end result is a listing on the MLS that shows more bedrooms than what was shown to the health department or CDS. And so due to the lot sizes in Bella Vista, feedback that we've gotten from real estate agents, we just feel like we need to do something to protect the buyers of these properties. And so Larry had a lot of good insight, I want to thank Thomas Dixon, he's the local builder with a lot of experience here. And so I'm open to questions, but I do think that we need to tweak that and I put, Larry put some suggestions in that email. Everybody that I'll talk to seems to think that if we could get a definition of a bedroom, that would certainly help us. The information I put in that email after visiting with the Department of Health, the first representative I talked to told me that that's how they considered a bedroom with 70 square feet, two meters of egress and the closet. And then when I talked to the supervisor, he changed their stance to just say that anything that's considered a sleeping quarter, they consider a bedroom. And I think I may have shared with you all, the last time we discussed this, one of the recent occurrences was we had some complaints come through that were submitted to the health department as a two bedroom and approved for a two bedroom, that submitted to CDS Plans Examiner as a four bedroom. We notified the builder that we couldn't put a four bedroom on a two bedroom septic, so they came in and scratched out two of the bedrooms and wrote spare on one of them and office on the other. And the International Code Council tells us that we have to take a builder at their word, if they tell us it's an office, it's an office. So we approve it as a two bedroom office and a spare room. And the house gets built, we finalize the house, we give them a certificate of occupancy and then, oh, actually, before they got the COC, the health department does their third and final inspection, happens to go inside the house because the door was unlocked or someone was there, they see that it's actually a four bedroom and they deny the, they deny the permit. So we finalized the house and, and now the health department selling the builder, he has to remove two closets so that those rooms aren't considered bedrooms. So and you'll, I can share some stats with you showing, but basically in 2020, about half of the houses that were submitted through CDS have than the health department application states. When a builder signs that, that health, they're attesting the number of bedrooms in that house. So, and then that, that's continuing into 2021. About half of the permits that we've received in 2021 show more bedrooms than what's coming in on the application. What we consider a bedroom, we look at it, can tell that it's a bedroom, but it's actually called an office. So what happens is that house gets sold on the market as a four bedroom, they got a two bedroom septic and six people move in there. And now that everybody's at home during COVID, you don't have parents working using the restrooms, kids at school using the restrooms, you've got more laundry, more dishwashing and five or six people at home taking showers and using the bathroom. And septic systems are failing, instances in 2020 with this situation with the council?
Yes, thanks, everybody, thanks, Mayor, thanks, council for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been building in Bella Vista since November of 2005, have probably built 170 homes, I'm real familiar with the septic process. You know, we had the change in 2016 and if you're not familiar with that, there was a change to septic guidelines in April of 2016 that required really more septic lines. So what that did is that took a lot of lots in the village that would have had room for a three bedroom septic and they were no longer big enough for a three bedroom septic, even though they would have been used in March of 2016 as a three bedroom septic. So I think that's probably where we saw a lot of these issues began. You know, Bella Vista was just not platted to be a community with these, with, with homes that are this large. We, we've put in a lot of septic systems and we've always followed not only the letter of the guidelines, but the spirit of the, of the guidelines. And we've seen some issues in the past couple of years with surfacing of septics where we'd never seen that before. And a lot of those have been recently, and I think Doug makes a great point in that these homes or these septic fields are not really designed to have residents at home all day long. And I don't think this is a temporary situation because so many people now are being allowed to work at home permanently. So I think that's something to keep in mind is that, you know, people are just gonna use a lot more water during the day and these septic fields never have time to really rest. Regarding the issue of, you know, of three or four bedrooms being placed on a two bedroom septic, in my, in my opinion, the guidelines are already there. The letter of the, of the rules already there, I think we just need some mechanism so we can enforce the spirit of that rule as well. You know, it's, to me, it's kind of a competitive issue, we don't, we don't put three and four bedroom septics on two bedroom houses. And if our competition's allowed to do that, and that puts us at a disadvantage when we're following rules. So I think the council should probably look at, you know, how, how can we enforce those rules that are really already there with the state of Arkansas, with the, with the state health department? You know, one suggestion that I made is whenever there's a permit application filed with the state, there's a form that has to be signed where you attest to the number of bedrooms. One suggestion I had is maybe the city requires that to be raised to an affidavit level where the property owner and not, and not a representative of the property owner, but the property owner himself has to notarize this document. Bella Vista is kind of, I mean, some of you may know this, but it's, it's a place where a lot of new builders begin and it's a place where a lot of investor builders come in because the lots are considerably cheaper than they are in other cities. You know, you can buy a $5,000 lot in Bella Vista, you probably can't touch a Bentonville lot right now for less than $50,000. So it's got a lower dollar entry level, so you see a lot of investor builders that are coming in. And kind of a sidebar, you may or may not know this, but one foreign investor just purchased every Bella Vista lot that was currently on the commissioner of state lands list, bought over 700 lots.
Wow.
So we'll kind of see what comes of that, but, but anyways, you, you have a lot of investor builders who are kind of hands off and they may hire another builder to build investment properties for him. And I think that that property owner needs to be made aware and needs to be responsible for the health department guidelines, he doesn't need to be an absentee investor. So that's one suggestion that I, that I've got. You know, we've, we've always operated under, you know, under the rule that if the room has a closet, it is a bedroom. And it sounds like, Doug, there's some moving targets there as to what the state's defining a bedroom. With regards to the ordinance that, that's the proposed, I'm, I'm not in favor of the ordinance the way that it's written because I think that it, that it limits a homeowner's choice as to what size they want rooms. Whenever you're restricting a house based on, or you're, you're tying septic size to the square footage of the house, you're telling the person they can't have a large bedroom or they can't have a large living room. Or they can't have a den or a, or a study. So I think, you know, the ordinance is, you know, I think, I, I think it's a great attempt to solve this problem, but I think it's maybe missing the point a little bit. But yeah, that's kind of my input, Doug, I appreciate the chance to speak and I can answer any, any questions about my experiences, if anybody has some.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dixon?
No, but, but thank you, that was useful input. And Doug, I see Larry Kelly has joined us again, maybe we could hear from him and then we can kind of start the conversation.
Sure, thanks, Steve, Larry was also on the call, longtime real estate agent, provided a lot of helpful information. So Larry, I shared with the council, the email that you sent the group with those three or four suggestions, because I thought that it was exactly what they needed to see and maybe what needs to be done. So would you mind sharing some of your takeaways from that meeting and some, some thoughts with the council?
Sure, I, I agree with what Tom said. I believe that this is going to be more than one thing that solves this issue. And that's the reason I made those suggestions or bullet points that, that kind of summarized some of our conversations that day, I think there were a lot of good recommendations. And it starts with defining a bedroom. And it also has some accountability, if someone, you know, misleads or misrepresents the floor plan or what's permitted and, and goes and builds something else, I, I think that there should be some penalties. That, that's not the kind of person you want building in your community. And I'm not usually one to say that. So it's, it's, it's just that, you know what? The other thing that Tom mentioned was that Bella Vista was never meant to be a community of large homes. And, you know, I've represented builders where we wanted to build a four bedroom, 2,400 square foot home and we bought two lots. That provided for the opportunity to do that. Single lots in Bella Vista are not designed to support a big house, it was never designed for that. And so I think that when you, when you have these folks that are coming in and Tom mentioned some of them that are, are new or inexperienced builders or investors and, and, you know, I, I used to represent one of the largest developers in Benton County, Land Quest Communities. And, and I know that for builders, if you can build a bigger house at a higher price point, then the profitability's bigger. It's a percentage gain. And however, I do also believe that the marketplace not only would tolerate, but would enjoy having more affordable two bedroom plus an office. Our, or, and I know that three bedrooms is desirable, but the marketplace is changing, both for retirees and for beginners, new buyers. So, yeah, I made some, some suggestions there that would hopefully help address a solution rather than square footage. I agree with Tom as well on that issue is that I believe that Councilwoman Lloyd was trying to address the issue in a manner that she thought might fit, but I don't, I don't agree with that approach, I think there's a better idea. And as far as these folks staying at home and, and, and spending more time without that septic And as far as these folks staying at home and 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 spending more time without that septic resting, that's exactly what's taking place. Along with some misleading stuff on resale. And and I know that we're talking about new construction right now, but I'd also submitted that information, Doug, to to try and 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 address maybe some resale problems that were occurring as well. And that information that I sent to you was something that I put together along with Caroline Eastman from the Health Department, as well as Piper Satterfield. And we worked for like 18 to 24 months on that to present to the Benton County Coram Court. And no, Jerry wasn't on a chat. We did it before then. But we feel like that that's a good approach to address some of those things that happen in resale situations. That there's no real inspection process. And and there's no real, Bella Vista is better than most areas as far as location information, but but still, sometimes those things don't get installed just exactly as permitted either. At least they didn't used to. So I think it's a good idea to look at that for what benefits it may offer as far as inspection, certification, location. And then once those things are done, you've got a permanent record of that. We even brought that down to the Washington County Tax Assessor's Office. They love the idea because Washington County does have an inspection process for for resale, but it has no teeth in it. It's just really kind of a visual or an observation kind of inspection. And I think we delved a lot deeper in that with the assistance of the Health Department to to make it something really significant, to make sure that system works, make sure you know where it's located. And then education for the buyer as well, because many people don't have any understanding of how septic systems work or what you need to do to maintain them. And and I think that's an important factor, too.
I would agree with you, Larry. In fact, I have a neighbor up the street who, oh, I guess he bought about a year ago and now he's facing a $25,000 bill because the septic has given out and it wasn't designed for exactly what we're talking about. Appreciate you taking the time. I think what we're looking at probably is another ordinance for the transfer, you know, in between. So there's new construction and transfer. We already have an ordinance on the books. It says if there is a sewer line going past your house and you're on septic and you want to sell before you're you must connect to the septic. So I think we got one piece of the puzzle, Larry, but there are a couple of more bigger pieces I think that we need to address. So I thank you for your help with this.
I had one more quick point.
Yeah, sure, Tom.
There there was another idea that was brought up on our Zoom call and I wanted to throw it out there for discussion. But in in other jurisdictions in Northwest Arkansas, whether it be Centerton or Benton County, there's a requirement to label the house for the energy code. And that labels were required to be placed inside of the breaker panel. So if you were to open the door on the panel, it would be on the inside of the door. Somebody brought up the idea on our previous Zoom call that we would require or that we could require labeling for the septic system in the breaker panel so that the buyer is aware, because I think, you know, one of the best ways to stop this problem is probably to have builders feel some pain. And if they're trying to sell a house that's that's got four bedrooms, but it's only built for a two bedroom septic, buyers are going to see that. And they're gonna, they're gonna offer less because that 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 house is 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 really worth less. So maybe City Council considers a requirement for labeling so that the buyer is aware of what size septic is in that house.
On resales also.
Yes, I agree. I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. That's that's an excellent idea. Doug, back to you. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to add one thing before we move on to the next person that adds to the discussion. Something we've seen just in the last few weeks in CDS is house comes in, two bedroom approval from the Health Department gets submitted to us with four bedrooms. We tell them we can't do it. So we've seen a builder actually remove the framing of the closet doors and just put some shelves inside there and it's just considered a storage area. And the house sells and we haven't confirmed it, but I'd be willing to bet a that coke that the closet gets built after closing when when the buyer moves in. And so that's just someone finding a loophole for a problem that we're trying to address and it's like they're staying one step ahead of us. So I think there were a couple of questions and then Ms. Lloyd was also on the call if you if you all don't mind her perspective. Steve?
Yeah, Mayor, here's the way I look at this. And I really appreciate the outreach that's happened here that was called for. You know, we had a lot of response last time we talked about it. So the way I've been kind of wrapping my mind around this is last time we established that there is a problem and something needs to be done about it. So we were, we were, I think there was pretty much consensus around that. An idea was put out there. The first idea was kind of tie it to square footage. And that was like a straw man proposal. Here's one way to solve the problem. That's fine. And now we've done, we got feedback and some people said, that's not the right way to do it. Why don't you round up the expertise and and confer, allow people to have their voices heard, come up with, do some brainstorming and that kind of thing. And that's happened now. I think that's fantastic. So what I'm looking for now, and and these ideas, when I read through them, I thought they were great. I'm I'm not sure where it went with the Benton County Coram Court. I assume it didn't get adopted. I'd be interested in hearing why not, but do we have yet consensus around here is the best two or three things we can do to solve the problem? That's a question from Doug, I think.
I don't think we do, Doug. It sounds like there are a lot of great ideas, but more time is needed to start pulling it together.
Do you feel that way, Doug? Or did, were you trying to narrow it down to say this is, this is the sweet spot? If we can do this, we're going to solve this problem?
I would like to narrow it down. And the definition of a bedroom, I think, with certain health, that may not be the only thing we need to do, but I think that needs to be a part of it.
I like the definition of the bedroom. I also like some kind of buyer protection that at the point of closing, there's full awareness for you're about to buy a house that was built with a two bedroom septic tank on it. You, that's up to you whether you want to proceed at this point. It's unfortunate. It would go all the way to the closing. You know how that is. Everybody's excited. They want to close on the house. They want to get the deal done. I don't know how far we can move it up in the process, though, but I certainly want to see something at the buyer protection level.
So Doug, I would agree, but Doug, how much time do you need? Well, I mean, if this gets tabled, I think we could have something by the next. March or April? We could do something by March. Okay, all right.
Mayor?
Yeah, Larry?
One thought might be is that we've talked about building side footprint sizes versus septic systems in the current draft of the ordinance. One thought might be is that we base it upon lot size. We have some large lots in the city that would support larger drain fields, hence larger footprints for buildings. And I think that might be a possibility. I like the idea of an affidavit upgrading the builder certificate certification. And I like the idea of labeling in the electrical panel about the septic system size as to what it's been constructed as. I think if nothing else, the information has been provided. There's a lot of other approaches that might be used. One is a is a requirement that the septic size and capacity be disclosed as a part of the disclosures provided by the seller to the buyer. Might be a helpful thing to it because it puts it up in front, puts it out in the open, and that's something that we could require by ordinance. So I think there's a number of good ideas that have been presented tonight that would help us. The definition of a bedroom, it says two points of exit. I'm assuming one of those is the doorway that you go in and out. The second one probably is a suitable sized window that gives you access to emergency exit. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Okay, good thoughts, Larry. I I would support that as well. Doug Fowler?
Yeah, so I'd just like to take a step back a little bit. Because there was like the original intent of the initial ordinance that was written, proposed by Linda. But then I got this kind of like overflow of information and it went other directions as well. So when I read through all of that, I kind of went like, okay, well, you know, what is our intent? Where are we going with this? And it it seems like a multifaceted problem, right? We have future builds, we have current builds that already exist, but also in there we had potential solutions, you know, that that could occur based upon fields that might fail. So I think we've got this holistic problem and we're addressing one portion of it right now. And I'd really kind of like to see it broken down into kind of like different steps that that we need to take because solving for future builds is great. And I heard some really good ideas in that regard, but this is a huge problem and we're not, we're not really solving the whole thing. And I don't know if we're going to solve it. But what like the intent right now is to is to solve the future builds, right? And then again, these other things are still left out there hanging somewhere and they are a problem. They're going to continue to problem and they're going to grow as problems. And I see issues on the buyer end and I see issues on the seller end, right? I was having a conversation with Derek earlier today and when I read through some of the maybe required inspections or recommended required inspections on existing homes and, you know, what might take place there. And I could actually see, you know, every buyer that comes into Bella Vista, potential buyer, using the leverage of the septic system to negotiate a better price like for a home, regardless of whether there's a problem or not. But but anyway, where I'm going with this is I, do we really have our arms around this problem holistically?
I don't think we do. No, that's why I was asking.
I'd like to see it better, better like defined and bucketed, if you will. And what steps do we need to take? Because we're not solving the whole problem here at all.
See, Doug, I don't think you're going to have it all, all, you know, laid out by March.
No, 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 I don't disagree with that. All I'm saying
Sorry, the other Doug.
Sorry, yeah.
Larry?
One question that I have is, and this is really for Doug, is what what do you do when you have a septic system that fails? What what are the alternatives available to the owner at that time? Currently? I I think one of the options obviously is if the sewer, if you're in an area where you have municipal sewer available within 300 feet, you're required to connect. But that is an exception. What do you do if you don't have that option?
Well, option is the remediation that was that the mayor mentioned earlier that's very expensive. And then another, on a case by case basis, the POA will let you extend, if a septic, if a current septic system fails, they will look at it on a case by case basis to let you extend in the common property. So the septic system will perk properly. That's the only two options. There may be a third. That's the only two I'm aware of.
Doug, whenever we have an issue, we generally get the State Health Department involved. And they'll usually come out and do an inspection. I think to act, answer Doug's, or if I could add this point that to to me, this is entirely a buyer protection issue from from top to bottom. Because if you do have surfacing of effluent, it's going to get expensive. And if you can't solve the issue, the State Health Department may pull the permit. And then which would mean turning off the water. So then you've got a big problem. So I think it's all a buyer protection issue, 100% top to bottom.
Let me, let me advise you one thing. We already have an ordinance that we adopted many years ago that requires if there's a failing septic system and after notice that the POA would have, or any potable water provider, which is going to be the POA, I guess there are a couple of other small ones, would have to shut the water off. It becomes illegal for the POA to continue to provide fresh water to those locations. So what happens practically if you have a failing system? Well, it it gets fixed either through a combination of whatever Doug was talking about, either onsite or POA land or or if they're accessible to the sewer system, they do that. But the the short answer is that that we do not allow it to keep running on top of the ground. The water hits. So that's what happened to the to the owner. That's the practical resolution at the time.
Well, thank you. I didn't know that.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, Mike suggested, because we're going to end up going back to square and we just scrap this thing altogether and and start over. Instead of waiting for the second or third reading, just dump the whole thing because it's not going to look anything like it does now when they get it done. We just need to let this sucker go and rebuild it and then start over.
The way to do that would be at the at the meeting, just table it indefinitely and let it go and then
Well, but I don't want it. I don't want it to go back like the second reading. So we've only got one more after that. I just want it gone and then start over. So we go to the three readings, give people plenty of time to get their two cents worth in because look how much new info we got just between when we we stopped it and started. That same thing's going to happen when we start to rebuild. And we may need that whole three meetings thing. And we're already, you know, dragging our feet on it or can't work it out because it is a a very intriguing way to to get this done and try to make it right. So my my suggestion is this, what we currently have just up and disappears. And yeah, I can say something next week, but make it
The only way to disappear is to table indefinitely. And that makes it disappear.
But when we bring it back, though.
You don't have to bring it back, Jim. It wouldn't
Okay, all right.
It's gone.
Not tabled to a time certain. It's tabled indefinitely. So it's never reset. So so then you you start over with something fresh and give you
That's where I'm trying to go.
I think I think both Doug's, then that gives us more time, you know, to start framing it out into all the various pieces of the puzzle. Doug, that gives you, or Doug Tap gives you an opportunity to go back and and meet with Larry and Tom and some of the others and starting to refine it. What do we really want to do? I like, I like Tom's, you know, emphasis on on protecting the buyer. But I'm, I'm sure there must be some stuff in there, too. And Larry, you probably have more experience than I as well as Tom knows it as well. So I think let's table it indefinitely. Let this one ride. And then, Mr. Tap, when you feel that you've got something, either one piece, but you know what the other pieces are, if we go, okay, here's an ordinance that's going to address this. Here's an ordinance that's going to address that. And we're not prepared to go with the first one. However, way that you want to present it to council, I'll leave it to you. But I think I think Jim is right. We've got to start over again because this is something that is much bigger, I think, than we had first thought.
You know, and I'm just going to mention one other thing before we let it go. And I know this not going anywhere. It's just to put it on the table. And I know we probably can't because we're public and it's a private. Is there anything we can do in regard? Because it's all about the septic system. It's a huge issue. Look, I have huge concerns about my own personal home, quite frankly. I mean, I do. I won't go into details with all that. But to partner with Village Wastewater to try to help speed up the process of expanding our sewer system across Bella Vista where we can, I don't know. And I don't know if there's anything we can do there. But, you know, where we can start moving further away from having to build these septic systems, you know, so I'm just, that's just something to, for conversation, yes.
I know that they have all the businesses on the sewer. Once you start getting to 279, that's as far as they can go. I remember Tom Wooders before Frank Knight telling me that if they were to go into the West, into the Highlands, all in there, they would have to build a whole new septic field or or complex because they wouldn't be able to service it from the one that's down on on 71.
I wish it ran by my house. I'd hook onto it in a heartbeat.
Yep. But I think, you know, there's that whole problem with just not having enough capacity
I get it.
On the Highway 71 to be able to. And what bothers me is the West growing. It's now on par with the East for new permits.
Mayor?
Jerry?
I don't know what I've got. What? I don't know. Can you see my hand? I mean, I've had my hand up.
No, you're very dark.
I've waved and everything else, but
Very dark, Jerry. I can hardly see you.
Okay, I'll try to change that. Couple of questions, couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, as Doug mentioned, Doug Fowler mentioned earlier, if this thing can be broken down into sections rather than if this thing could be broken down into sections rather than, you know, trying to, uh trying to eat the whole elephant at one time, break it down into pieces. I, I think it would be a whole lot easier for everyone to digest, uh to understand it. Um number two, um Doug Tap, I don't, all the um, uh the extra information that you've mentioned here, um I didn't, I didn't receive, so I don't, uh, I don't know, um if I have to check my city email on a regular basis or if you um have got my personal email address to send all that to.
Um. I'll double check that, get it over to you. I see your name on some of them. Um.
Well, I think the answer is yes, you do have to check your city email on occasion.
Yeah.
That's probably the primary means of communication for this council. So yes, you do. Uh Doug, I, I think I understand uh council member Wozniak's consideration for tabling what we have now and kind of getting a fresh start, but I, I don't want you to be discouraged and I think we have momentum now. And I don't think we're that far away. I think there's several good ideas on the table and if we can do this fitting, like here's the problem and here's what we're gonna do to solve it. And we don't have to be perfect, guys. We just need to make it better. And the sooner we do something, the better, in my opinion, as long as we're doing the right thing. So I might be, I might be okay with tabling what we have now, but I hope not to lose the momentum that we have uh with, with people being interested and, and contributing. We need to leverage that uh and, and get this and maintain a sense of urgency, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we can let this go at all, because it's extremely important. It's, it's it's a big, big issue right now. Um I'm very heartened by the fact that we've got, you know, builders and realtors all together um pitching in and helping us. And I think, I think we keep going that route and, and yeah, just tackle the beast. If it has to be different segments, Doug Fowler, I'm fine with that, because yeah, you're right. I mean, this is much bigger than a breadbox.
One more question.
Yep, Jerry?
Um what responsibility does the, does the real estate agent, uh the seller, uh what responsibility do they uh play in this as far as disclosure?
Larry, is there anything on the disclosure form that says?
I'll, I'll give you a shot. Um, well, here's the thing. Yes, we have a seller's property disclosure. Uh we actually present that to the listings, to the seller, so that they can disclose anything known that the buyer should know about. However, real estate agents only know what the seller tells them. Uh that's the reason we do the seller property disclosure, not only for the buyer, but also for us as agents, as far as to limit our liability, to be honest. Uh we're not required to go out there and poke around in your backyard and figure out the size of the septic. Um in some cases, some really over and, and above agents will go to the A C C and pull the old septic drawing in some cases. But in many cases, that seller absolutely has no idea what they had. They don't. And so they can't pass that information along, because they don't know.
How hard is it to find out?
I beg pardon?
How hard is it to find out?
Well, that's the reason that we were trying to approach things with the uh, with the inspection requirement. Is that many sellers, they just don't, you know, the thing about septics is that many people that have septic systems don't give it a second thought. As long as the flush takes it away, they don't think about it again. They don't think about how it's designed. They don't think about where it goes or how it works. They just don't. And we've got so many people coming in from cities and from outside our area that have never had a septic system before.
Right.
And they just don't even know to ask that question.
Linda, I see that you'd like to say something?
Yeah, just a quick comment. The ordinance that I proposed in December was to get a discussion started and that part has been successful.
It has.
The, um, the, I talked with the title company about requiring a copy of the septic permit at closing and they will only do that if there is a city ordinance requiring that to be done. If the realtors only marketed the house based on the number of bedrooms on the septic permit and if the appraisers appraise the house based on the number of bedrooms on the septic permit, this issue would stop immediately.
I agree.
Perhaps a, a, or a city ordinance saying that the number of bedrooms in the house must match the number of bedrooms on the septic permit, that might help. And based on Doug's numbers, I would just urge council not to tarry too long, because if fifty percent of our building permits are houses bigger than the septics, this problem is exploding.
Yes, it is.
I agree with that.
Yeah, those are good thoughts, Linda. Yep.
I have a comment for Linda, if I may.
Sorry?
I have a comment uh with Linda, if I may.
Okay.
Uh Linda, I would agree and, agree to that in principle. But if that is something that's immediately enacted, then those people that got, that bought property that didn't know that it was a two-bedroom septic and a four-bedroom home are gonna be really left in an uncomfortable position. Um.
Well, that's the realtor's fault. When I list a house or when I buy a house with a buyer, I go to the city and get a copy of the septic permit and I advise my clients what it is. And all professional realtors should be doing that.
But you know what, Linda? That's what you and I do most of the time, but that's not what everyone is trained to do.
Well, they should.
Well, in many cases, those agents don't know any more about septic systems than the owners do. And that's the reason.
Yeah, but if they're gonna operate in Bella Vista, if they're gonna operate in Bella Vista, they're gonna meet that expectation.
Tom, but.
But there needs to be some help in, in understanding those things.
Okay, Tom?
I think a point Linda may be trying to make also is that um, you know, I, I I know several builders in the, in the, in the village and if there's a change in inspection procedures or something like that, word gets around the village and around the builder community very, very quickly. And if you have a situation where one builder really gets hit in the, in the pocketbook, like Doug, you, you you mentioned the one builder who they, who the state health department would not permit the house. It won't take that happening but once or twice and the problem will correct itself. Um I have to say that there doesn't need to be an ordinance or two to, to uh, you know, fix it permanently, but uh I think if you, if you've got a situation where a builder can't sell his house from what he expects to, the, the problem gets fixed quickly.
Right, I would agree.
Good point. Okay, I think we've um done justice for the evening, so. Mayor, I was, I've got one additional comment. I was just gonna say, when I agreed March a while ago, that was for a new construction. We're gonna jump into current transfer sales, disclosure, the title companies, as well as new construction. That's gonna require several more meetings and get togethers with these agents and builders and that, that, that could take a few months to try to nail. Yeah, it can, but I think if you break it down like, like Doug mentioned earlier, you know, what is the most immediate need? From, and the most immediate need is the new construction, because of, of the fifty percent that you mentioned earlier. Then, then you move into perhaps Larry's idea about the transfer. Um we also, you know, had a whole bunch of, of, of good suggestions tonight and we gotta bucketize those to make sure which is, is gonna fall into those three. I guess I'm looking at it as three char, three buckets. There's the new construction, there's the sale and then what happens if it fails? Um and we seem to have something there anyway that, you know, the water would not be turned off. But I think we gotta look at this not just as, as one big thing and spend months trying to tackle it. I think we're gonna have to break it into easy pieces, but address the one that is the most urgent, which is exactly what you said at the outset. Doug, you got fifty percent uh coming in that just, they don't cut the mustard. Uh Jerry, did I see your hand up one more time?
Yes, I just wanna know if you can see my hand now.
Yes, thank you for turning on the light. We've seen the light, Jerry. We can see you.
Good, alright. Problem solved.
Thank you. Alright. Larry, Tom, thank you so very much. Linda?
Thank you, guys. Thank you for inviting us.
Pleasure. I hope you'll hang in with us and, and help Doug and the rest of us navigate these waters, so we can move quickly and get new things in place to protect.
Yes, thank you, Doug. Uh Doug knows that I'm available to help any way that I, that I can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Hey, uh really good discussion. Thanks very much, one and all.
Really good.
The um Doug, are you, Doug Fowler, you still okay if we keep on going?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the next is the, is an ordinance, um it's a zoning ordinance to rezone property described in the zoning petition number twenty twenty thirty-six oh ninety-eight. Uh parcel number sixteen dash thirty-one zero forty-three dash zero 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 from P one to R one. We um had quite a bit of discussion about this. The current um is a, is an amendment that Doug Fowler put forward, which basically says, let's take the two-point-two-five roughly acres that is not in the flood plain and we'll do that as an R one. Everything else stays as a P one, so that we're protecting uh further down the uh the stream, so that we're not doing any kind of damage. Um Doug, I've, I've sort of put words in your mouth. Do you wanna say anything more to that?
Um yeah, you know, I would just like to bring up one point. Uh first of all, I wanna, you know, I don't wanna do anything with the amendment. I like for it to, to stay uh as, as we proposed and what was passed. But I read back through the letter that we received, uh you know, from uh, I don't know, the entity that's selling the property that requested the rezone. And, and just bear with me here for just a second, okay? Because I just wanna make a point. Um they, they talked about the planning commission, um I guess how they approached the consideration for the rezone and then uh how they gave no rationale or reasoning for uh not voting to approve it, okay? And they said it was done like in an arbitrary manner and no thought, no reasoning, no rationale. And I, I didn't think that they, I think they, I don't know, I won't say what I think, if they misrepresented the commission or not, but I would, I would like to, to read this for, for just one second. One, one paragraph that they put in their letter. They said, "In addition to failing to support, in addition to failing to support this decision with reasoning or rational basis, the commission's decision goes directly against the underlying staff recommendation," again, "against the underlying staff staff recommendation regarding that application. The commission received a strong recommendation for approval of the application from the commission staff found in the staff report accompanying the application, which clearly states, 'Commission staff recommends rezoning the subject lands.' This recommendation for approval was discussed at length at the commission meeting, as is evidenced in the meeting minutes. The commission's failure to follow the substantial, clear and convincing, convincing evidence contained in the staff's recommendation of approval is further in strong support of C C I's assertion that the commission's denial is arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable." What I would like to, to clarify is the fact that the staff did not recommend approval of the initial request of C C I. The staff's approval was based upon their recommendation of what my amendment was, what was to approve the two-point-two-five acres to be rezoned as R one, not the entire nine-point-whatever acres that they, they, they uh originally uh requested. But they make it sound like in here, like the staff recommended approval of the full and whole entire property, but they did not.
You're right.
So this misleading paragraph, this misleading statement, and I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Yeah, no, you're bang on. You're spot on.
So anyway, having said that, I don't know if we need to discuss it any further or not. Um I'll be ready to vote on it uh this coming Monday night, or next Monday night.
Okay, that'll go to third reading.
I, I would like to just say one thing and talk, uh I've mentioned it before, but it's just very important that your debate be at the regular meeting, so that there are minutes to reflect that, because there very well might be some very good discussion at this meeting. There are no minutes of this meeting. The, this meeting is just to get ready for the regular meeting. So if there's a challenge, if we end up going to court and we're producing minutes and talking about, look at what all the city council looked at, how they talked about it, all this good stuff during a work session is not gonna be there.
Yeah, and that's, and, and I will, I, I will do exactly that next Monday. And also Derek, Derek and I had a conversation earlier today uh about the flood plain, the flunzo, the flood line, et cetera. Uh and what the Corps has completed on that property to this date versus what they've completed on other properties in Bella Vista. And there is still additional work to be done on that property, but Derek, we might wanna wait until next Monday, Monday night, unless you wanna go ahead and lay it out, so people can think about it and then we can talk about it again next week. But I don't know, what do you?
Eric, you muted.
Sorry about that. Um Doug, Mr. Fowler, you, you tell me, um I just gave you that, that you, you know, you just asked me a little bit more about flood plain earlier today, so I wouldn't mind being able to digest it with you possibly a little bit more and then we could get it out to the whole council with, you know, Doug and Mayor Christie getting a look at it. But you let me know if you have any specific questions, I am here, so.
Yeah, well, you know, the conversation we had today, maybe we just wait until next Monday, Monday night to, to clarify some of that, so it can be part of the record.
Okay, that sounds good.
Alright. Okay, do you wanna weigh in on this some more? I think we've beaten it to death. Okay, let's go on to the next ordinance under Old Business. Amending Article Three, Chapter twenty-four of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, clarify the, the definition of special event. Um Cassie, this was yours and uh we did a lot of changes as a result of council input, so thank you, one and all. There was one that was missed and that was moving um, or excuse me, changing the timeframe from ninety to a hundred and eighty days to sixty to a hundred and twenty. That change was made. And uh Mr. Kelly sent out something this afternoon and, and hopefully all of you've got it.
Way, it would've been from Wayne, but uh I did draft a, an amendment that, that I believe that Cassie uh it, it, it goes along with the discussion we had at the last meeting and uh it does make that change to go to sixty to one hundred and twenty days. It also adds an emergency clause, which is one thing that Cassie requested you consider. Uh so that's also been added. And there was discussion about the deposit. The deposit provision was already in there, so it remains in there. Requires the deposit of two hundred dollars to uh make sure that basically the cleanup has occurred for lots of cliff note, but uh and so all those, that, that email that you got today, that would've come from Wayne, that has that document, that, that's basically a substitute, a substitute amendment. Uh so uh which includes uh those changes that I just mentioned.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jerry?
Uh just one quick question. Um is two hundred dollars sufficient deposit for um uh to ensure cleanup?
I can tell you, Jerry, that uh from, and I don't know if Cassie's on the line, I should, I should've asked, but that.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Cassie. I'll let you tell it.
Um my personal opinion on the deposit is the city doesn't have any facilities really that it uses for events. We don't have parks, we don't have restrooms, we don't have any of that. The only thing that we would actually permitting this on is the trails. So I think two thousand, or two hundred, excuse me, would be adequate in that it's, it's not like we're gonna have to redo a bathroom facility if something gets damaged or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, some of these events can be pretty trashy. I mean, it's for uh
Thank you.
You know, a variety of uh paper goods and so on. Um and if, um, and if that has to be farmed out or subcontracted out to someone else to, to clean that up, um, again, is, is two hundred dollars sufficient to cover that? If you think so, if you think so, then that's, hey, that's fine.
Of course, that's up to you guys. Two hundred dollars is in line with what the city of Bentonville does and they do have larger venues that they use for their events. Um but.
We really haven't had any problems today.
No.
Okay.
I, I can't recall any problems we've had and usually if there is an accumulation of trash or something like that in a certain location, it's going to be at the start or the finish line, which is typically gonna be on P O A property or other private property.
Okay.
And if we're unhappy with them, they may not get a permit next year.
That's correct.
That's true.
And I would like to add that I, I'm requesting that this be pushed along and passed. And I would like to add that I, I'm requesting that this be pushed along and passed possibly at the meeting next week, and that is because if we wait on the 60-day, to pass the ordinance at the end of the March meeting, as it would through the third reading, and then it would be 60 days until it goes into effect, and then we are asking for 60 days notice prior to events, that puts us out to the end of July before we can be approving any events, and we do have a May event and a June event that are already kind of in the coffers waiting, awaiting approval.
So time is of the essence for us.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and that, of course, is also dependent on the state of COVID in Arkansas, and obviously if events are being permitted because of what's going on with the pandemic.
So Wayne, at the end of this ordinance in brackets or in parentheses, would you please put in, as you, as you normally do, staff recommends move to third and final plus emergency clause?
Will do.
Emergency clause is in there, Mayor?
Yes.
It is in what Jason redid that I sent out today.
Yes, correct.
So that'll help a lot. Okay, anything else before we move on?
Mayor, as I say, I do need to get on the road, hopefully beat the weather. I will try to call in. So when I get, when I get started, so hopefully.
Pick up some barbecue for dinner, Doug.
Yeah, I'd like to get some, okay.
Okay, we'll see you later. Okay, moving on to new business, we have yet another ordinance, and that's also a zoning ordinance. And it's the Legion land, and they'd like it moved or rezoned from R1 to C2, like commercial. Staff and the planning commission have both recommended approval by council. And they've also asked that we move it to third and final reading, and the reasoning behind that is the Legion buyer. And that buyer is sitting in the wings, waiting for this to happen. Taylor, I think this was yours, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, have you any salient points that you'd like to add about the, about the petition?
Um, I mean, other than that it was already had some commercial on there, some commercial activity prior to this, and prior to the 2018 zoning map was made, for some reason it just got zoned as R1, even though 2018 it had some commercial activity on it. And again, our 2040 comp plan kind of pushes for more commercial zone and more, you know, sales tax and stuff like that. It's aligned with our 2040 comp plan. I think those are the two biggest points to take from this request.
And it is screened from the other R1 by trees?
Yeah, there's a really good landscape, natural vegetation screening behind it, between it and one property that's on the east side of it.
Right. Somebody had a handout. Larry?
Do we have other properties, Taylor, in the city that have this unique situation where they, they are acting in a commercial type activity, but it's zoned residential?
Um, another one that comes to mind is the Simple Pleasures Special Events Center. It's zoned as R1, but it has been a special events property for, I mean, longer than the 2018 zoning map for sure, but I would say, I think, top of my head, like 20 almost since prior to the city's existence, but that's the one that most is prominently in, that is zoned as R1, but it has been commercial nature and use.
Good point.
I guess it's not normal for the city to initiate rezonings, but where we have uses that are inconsistent with the zoning that's there, it would be my, my suggestion that the city initiate a rezone on this with the property owner's concurrence.
And that, that wouldn't be out of line, Larry. A number of years ago, we rezoned all the frontal property, which was owned by Sarah Parnell down where the Artist Retreat Center used to be. And we rezoned that whole strip into either C1 or C2, I can't remember. So yeah, you're quite right. If, if we can see this as being something commercial, and if Mr. Minor also buys into it, he's the owner, then yeah, absolutely, we should be doing that.
Especially when it has historic activity of this nature, or we're not taking something that's new in a use inconsistent with the zoning, but we're taking something that's been used in this fashion for before the city was incorporated, actually. And making it, making it fit with the zoning, it, I think it, it's a good gesture on our part to do that where we find that it's inconsistent.
Yep, I agree. Anybody else want to say anything?
It should be a no-brainer.
I agree. Okay, let's move on to the first resolution, excuse me, which is Item B. That's confirming the mayor's appointment of Doug Tap to be the City of Bella Vista's representative in the Benton County Solid Waste Management District. That's something that I have initiated. The Solid Waste Management Board is comprised in theory of all, but most mayors do not attend. And the reasoning behind it is politicians come and go, but your staff provides the backbone consistency and continuity. And so it's my suggestion that Doug, because it's mostly his peers that are on this from the other city, he appointed to be our, our representative on this on a going-forward basis. That doesn't stop him from attending at all. But it gives us some consistency going forward, rather than having to break in a new mayor every time, you know, one is elected. And there are times when I haven't been able to attend because there have been other things going on, and I usually try to get Doug as a proxy and go to that anyway. But I think, you know, the time has come, as we continue to grow, that we need that consistency going forward. So that's why I brought this to you for consideration.
Mayor, that makes sense to me. Now, would we have two people on, on the board? Would it be you and Doug, or just Doug?
No, there's just, it would just be one person, and that person gets one vote. And stopping, you know, anybody from going to attend, for example, if we have some recycling issues that are on the table, especially at grant time, then it's not unusual for two fellows from the recycling center to show up.
Sure.
They don't have a vote, but they can listen and participate as well.
As far as the City of Bella Vista having representation, we have one representative.
Yes, that's true. That's the same with all cities.
Okay.
Only one.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to put Doug on there.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item.
I accept.
How does, how does that fit with Doug's workload currently by adding this responsibility?
It makes it harder for him. I did it on purpose.
Need more challenges than opportunities, is that what you're saying?
Doug, I, I think we talked about this, but you're okay with it?
I am.
Okay. Alrighty. Item C, we've already covered. Item D is awarding and bidding and authorizing contract with pinnacle emergency vehicle amount not to exceed 150,000 for a remount of a 2013 ambulance. This is the fourth time that we've done this. And this will be the last time for the next couple of years per a discussion I had with Chief Sims.
No, sir, sir.
Yep, go ahead.
We have one next, we have one next year.
Oh, there's another one?
Yep, the 2011's next year, the last 2011.
Okay, and then there's a break of two years, three years?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and just to put it into perspective, this is $150,000. We bought a new one, I think it was about 240, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there, there's considerable savings, and yet you're basically getting the same thing. You're getting a brand-new chassis and cab, and then the box, for lack of a better word, has been completely upgraded. And in your package, you can see what those upgrades are. Chief Simms has included them. The other intriguing thing is we get the old chassis back. And what we have done in the past is we gave one to the street department a couple of years ago, and they built a sign truck using that. The fire department kept another one, and they built a brush fire truck, which is much smaller and easy, easier to maneuver, so that you can get right into the brush fire. If you try to take in one of the big bumpers, it's not going to work. Chief, any idea of what you might use this new chassis for?
Mike Button, Mike Button's taking it.
Oh, Mike's going to take it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So there's always a use, and we can refurbish it and put it back in, into some sort of park and somewhere where it can be used, so that's intriguing as well. So are there any questions for Chief Sims at all? Yes, Larry?
Is there any incentive in transferring the vehicle to the street department that you're getting?
Probably a pat on the back, that's about it.
So what's the question?
Is there any incentive for transferring it to another department?
What do you mean?
Other words, is it a lemon?
Actually, is there, is there cash in the deal? Because there's a benefit from one department to another department.
No, no.
No, sir.
Hold on a minute. Can we make it a cash deal? The question is, if you take street department, designated street department dollars and buy that truck at fair market value to the fire department, and I mean, I'm not trying to put words in Larry's, Larry, is that what you're trying to get at? I hadn't thought about that.
I'm thinking that there might be a wholesale value because you're trading it from department to department, not a retail value. But there is a benefit that's being used, is given up by one department that's come out of their budget, and it's going to another department that they don't have to spend money on, but they get it at a good deal.
I don't think you want to rob Peter to pay Paul.
To the city.
You're not really, it's, it's going from one, one benefit to another benefit, but they need to, it, it shows up, it shows up as being a benefit on the street department by getting the truck at a wholesale price or a discounted price from what they would need. And it gives them a benefit because now they got an additional vehicle, and they got it at a bargain price.
I would like to think it's more a benefit for all the residents as opposed to a benefit for just a specific department.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, not a, not a people in the city paying the bill, it's, it comes out of their budget, and it's used money out of there. So it's a budget.
I don't, I don't think we want to get into, you know, interdepartmental transfers. If you've ever been in the corporate world, they're ugly, they're not. I think this is for the benefit of another department, and Chief Sims is saying, I don't need it, so who would like it? And away we go. Jerry?
Steve, are these four-wheel-drive chassis?
Yes, sir, they are.
A question is, why would you not want a brush truck for, for each, each station?
Well, we, good question is, you know, part of that is housing, but you know, when a mayor talked about that, we actually have made two brush trucks out of chassis. We got one, actually, we're going to put one on the, on the west side at the new fire station in Branchwood, and we got one at Station 1, Town Center Fire Station.
What about, what about the, what about the east side? It looks like there's a, would be a, a big need for a brush truck on the east side. A lot of, got a lot of wooded area.
Yeah, we actually do have a brush truck over there, but it's not quite as big as the ones that we're building with these chassis. So we have a brush firefighting rig there, Jerry, as well.
You've got three already, Chief?
Yeah, we've got the, the small, small brush truck mayor, if you remember, the one we used, that we used before we started building these other chassis. But that's something we can look at in the future, which I didn't put in this year's budget for another brush truck, but we can look at it for the next year's remount. We can look at, you know, adding another brush truck to the fleet.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, let's move on to the next one, please. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with first employment staffing not to exceed 38,685 for mowing. This is something that we do every year. We went RFP, we had one response, which is normal. And in your package, you can also see that the responsibilities of all parties is also laid out. Mike isn't here, but are there any questions? You've all seen this before. Jerry, I think we were doing this back in the day when you were on the council as well. Bringing in.
Yes, yes, good.
Okay.
Thank you, it's excellent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter a contract pursuant to a state procurement contract, so that's something to pay attention to. That's for a four-by-four pickup not to exceed 32,532 for the street department. And we've already talked about that as well. Item G is authorizing mayor city clerk contract with Superior Automotive again on a state procurement purchase of a, of a 2021 Chevy Tahoe. It's a four-wheel drive not to exceed $37,000 for the police department. It is in the approved budget, and Chief is on the line if anybody has any questions for him. Seeing none, we'll move on. The next two are appointments to the planning commission. Shaki Al Madhun and Chad Nall are up for renewal, and we advertised for the positions. We had a number of great people step and they were interviewed by staff. If you look at the, at the resumes or the overviews that are in your pack, I think we're getting two folks here who are, are highly qualified and have a job on the planning commission for us, and Steve, I know, has been a fairly recent member of the planning commission. Have you any thoughts on the two candidates at all?
No, sir, other than just having seen their resumes, very impressive. It's always important that we have members of the community who are willing to put their hand up and say, I'll give that a shot for a while. So much of what we do is done on a volunteer basis, and it's really great to see a high quality of candidate, people interested in helping out the city.
Both Shaki and Chad have done a great job for us, too, and I want to.
Mayor, I had a question. I thought you said Shaki was one of the people, and the written thing I have says Craig Honchel.
No, Craig is the new one coming on.
Okay.
Craig and Susan.
Craig replaces Chad Nall.
Okay. I might have just misheard you.
Okay, now Larry, have a question?
Are both the existing persons in position two and three not interested in continuing?
Doug, I think Shaki said, no, I don't, I'm not sure about Chad. Doug, you're, yeah, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, we, we let them, I mean, they knew that their terms were expiring, and we, we let them know that we were going to publicize, and we didn't get, neither one of them put their name back in them. We didn't get an application from either one of them.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, the last resolution of the evening is authorizing the mayor and city clerk into a three-year 11-month lease with Vancon Properties for the space used or for property to be used as additional office space. This is where Linden Jewelry used to be. Doug's department has, it just keeps expanding as we, as we hire more code enforcement people, inspectors. And we, and we also have to be very much aware of, of COVID, and frankly, they're far too close and on top of each other. And so we look at this space, it's $1,200 a month. There are some bold improvements that the landlord is going to make for our cost on Doug, it's about $1,500 for IT.
No, I'm still waiting on the total figures from, you're close, Mayor, but depending on what all we add, security camera-wise and computer-wise, it's, it's, it could be a touch more, but you're not far off there.
So here's the plan, and I'm not sure if it'll happen while I'm still in office, but it gives an option for the new mayor coming in potentially move in 2022 into the new public safety building. At that point, then, we can actually expand Doug to where he should be expanding into the court and use the other section of that space for City Hall. And like many other businesses these days, including Businesses these days, including Walmart, they are seeing the value of people working at home. I'm not convinced that we actually need a brand new. Large City Hall. We have been very effective in having people work from home. I think we would set up something such as a mayor's office, probably the accounting office, certainly an assistant. And then we would probably have maybe three offices as what I might call hot seats going back to the corporate world. So if you're HR and you have two or three meetings. On one or two days and you need an office, you book the office and come in, you use it. And then the rest of the time you work from home until you want to come back in again. We probably have a conference room. In there as well. So I know that Walmart has considerably cut back on their, on their home office expansion. Because they have seen the value of people working at home. And this almost goes back to our, our previous conversation about septic tanks. I think the whole business world is changing. Some of you may have been in the corporate world back in the late eighties. And you may remember the phrase telecommuting. Everybody was going to telecommute. But there was great fear in management in those days of not being able to measure the productivity of people that they might be just sitting at home doing anything but. What they should be doing at work. I think those days have changed. Much easier now to see very quickly if someone is being productive or not. And I think Walmart has seen that in talking to some of the other mayors that are looking at that as well. And so I'm not convinced at this point that we. Need to spend a lot of money on a new building, perhaps someday. But I think this space will allow us to move out of where we are now. And. There has always been a plan to refurbish station number one. And part of that plan, one of the sets of plans was to tear down City Hall so that the. Fire trucks can actually get around and come in from the back instead of having to back in all the time. And. I guess basically just planning for the future and trying to set up the next mayor so that he or she will have, you know, some options to play with. Jerry?
I, I, to a certain extent, I totally disagree. I mean, I think the, the city's business and the retail business such as Walmart's two entirely two different situations. I think, I think the people, people need a, they need a place where they can actually make physical contact. With, with city officials, with city officials, the city offices. I.
I'm not suggesting that we don't have the public come in and meet with us, Jerry.
I'm sorry?
I'm not suggesting that the, that the taxpayers can't come in and meet with us. I would encourage that.
I agree, I agree with not needing a, a large elaborate facility such as a, a new city hall. I mean, I think the office arrangements that. That are currently, that are currently being offered are, are very adequate. I just think that, that trying to. Eliminate the, the need for. Physical contact, physical presence of, of the city officials. From the public is, is just a.
Well, you know, the public rarely comes in and meets with HR or, or communications.
Thanks.
So are legal, and legal is going to be moved anyway up to the, the public safety. And usually when they come in, they want to meet with me. They would probably want to meet with Doug in his office because I know that he meets with them all the time. What we have thought through, Jerry, is if hire somebody new on the department head team that normally work in a city hall environment, like let's say a new. A new HR person. It would be, I believe, a good idea that that person would be coming into the office every day for certain, say, the first three or four months so that he or she. And get that social interaction with the other department heads on a day to day basis.
Don't you agree though that the city councilman, they need office space and a personal assistant wherever council?
I've never seen a city, I've never seen a city alderman inside City Hall. Except for a brief meeting, but nobody sits in an office. Nobody has asked for a personal assistant.
I think he just did. Jerry just did.
I think so. Larry?
In, in response to Jerry's comments, the city of Topeka does have a clerical support and they have an office space. That the elected officials can go in and use for meetings or other things. So, so it's not unheard of, Jerry, and, and it might be something that would have merit for us. For meeting with a constituent or something as well.
Well, you could do that today because we have a, sure, we have a conference room and I would suggest we still have a conference room, you know, wherever we move City Hall to. Those very purposes, because there have been times when some of you have been actually in City Hall and, and meeting with constituents. John?
The three years, eleven months was a little bit of an odd time. Is that, so it matches up with the timing of other leases?
Yes, that's right. That's, that was one thing that Kerry asked for.
Okay. Would you like to hear my attempt to justify that extra space in, in the ordinance?
Nah, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's get into the discussion items, please. Doug, trails update?
Yes, sir. Trails, the Blowing Springs to Metfield pave connector. We've done some negotiating with the contractor in the last couple of weeks on their timeline. They asked for a hundred and fifty additional days. Weather and unforeseen utility conflicts and unforeseen rock, unforeseen wall requirements, retain wall requirements. We settled on seventy five days. So their new. Let me find my notes here. They've told us that. Substantial completion at the end of March and final completion April twenty nine. I have a feeling that this two weeks of cold weather and snow is going to. Cause them to come back and ask for another week or 10 days, but they haven't done that yet, but. Things are progressing nicely as soon as, the only thing that's held us back now is that utility pole over there. Near Metfield, two of the three utilities have removed their wires. As soon as the third one. I guess there's taken off, that section of trail will be completed and it's. The paving is at probably ninety five percent. They're just finishing punch list items and finished some grading and sod and so forth. So that, that project's getting really close to being done.
Larry?
I assume that contract has a weather delay provision in it. The contractor must make the request and you have to authorize it as a. A viable and, and reasonable approval.
That's correct. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to impact fees. Mr. Flynn?
Before, Mr. Mayor, before Doug leaves, could we get an update on the Mercy Way Bridge right away acquisition progress and things?
We can do that. Doug?
So as of now, as far as the right away is concerned, the consultant has. Completed almost all of the appraisals on those different properties. They have not completed meeting with each individual property owner onsite and that's something they're trying to do. They want to meet them onsite to go over their appraisal. So. She's, she's in the process of finalizing that now. The one. We're trying to acquire permanent construction easement for the city of Bentonville. That one is handled by Jason and the city attorney of Bentonville. They're trying to work out the details on that. Trying to find out from the state of Arkansas right now whether or not we need an appraisal on that property. If we don't, that'll save us a little bit of money. But since no one is going to change hands, hopefully on the easement.
We have a ti- timeline on that for completion of that phase, Doug?
On right away?
Yes.
Well, we're approaching the time, we're approaching. The end of that phase, but we're not going to meet it just because it took them several more months to get started than originally planned. And that delayed because we're waiting on our doctor. Yeah, we're waiting on our doc to approve the plan. So. Once we get appraisal, appraisals back on all those properties and we, even when we get the property owners to agree to a price. That all has to go back to our dot and they have to approve that. And so they will either stamp, say nay and. We still haven't gotten in touch with the gas station owner. So. This is not something that's going to be done in the next couple of months. It's, it's still got some time behind it. Then once we finish that, we've got to move utilities. I've got contracts from a couple of utility companies and we're still waiting on. Some from other utility companies. So I mean, that utility move is going to take six, six to nine months after we get right away. So. We're still quite a ways off from breaking ground.
Where are we at in the design process? The final design process?
I, I think we're, we're almost ninety, correct me if I'm wrong, we're beyond ninety five percent on that.
Yep. Okay. Now John, impact fees, please.
Okay. Our status in the impact fees is he's pretty far along in, on the library, police and fire. He's got a little bit more on the street side he's working through. We have a, a meeting with the citizens advisory committee, actually next Monday. The twenty, I guess it's the twenty second. So I'm anticipating there'll be a second meeting of that committee. About a week after that. So it should be completed right around the first of March, March first or second. And so I would think we'd be able to address the issue at the March meeting. And perhaps if mayor and people want to, we could call a special meeting if people want to talk about it a, a little sooner than that. So I was actually hoping to get him in, get him done before the February, I didn't time for the February meeting. We didn't quite make that. But we're very, I know some folks are pretty anxious to, to get going with it. But it looks like we'll be done very early March and, and be ready for the council to consider it.
Good. Any questions, Larry?
John, are the committee meetings open to the public? How do you, how are you holding those?
No, they're just for the advisory committee and the, and Carson Vice for, for them to, to work together on it. That's, they're doing, we're doing it by Zoom, but. So then after that, we'll be able to, you know, deal with the council with it. And of course, that will be open to the public.
Could I just add also, John, thank you for keeping us up to date and for driving ahead with a sense of urgency. I do think we should be very deliberate about this. Every month that goes by, we're missing an opportunity to, to recover some of the funds that are necessary. For the incredible amount of building that's going on in Bella Vista. I think this is really, really important and fair to our current residents. That we would, we would help, we would, we'd figure out some way for the cost of all these new homes to be shared fairly by the builders themselves, by the. Builders and the first homeowners. So thank you for, for moving quickly. And I hope that if we see that it's going to come in. Prior to our work session, I, I would agree to partner with you to call for a special meeting and, and try to consider those things as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry?
I think it would be helpful for all of us in, in preparation for the passage of that is to have any. Is to have any conceptual. Information that we can. Doug Fowler has just called in.
Oh, yeah, a conceptual, I think what you said was have conceptual information prior to the meeting.
So we can understand where they're headed on this and we have a better, better framework in terms of how we can assess whether it's a good plan or not a good plan.
Yeah, I, I think we'll be able to accomplish that.
Thank you.
Doug Fowler, you may want to go mute. A lot of people are coming through.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
What did I do? Star, star six?
Uh, good. Just press the mute button.
He's on the cell phone now.
I don't know. I'm sorry, Doug.
That's, that's better.
Okay, now it worked. Okay, Steve, you wanted to talk about the Bellevista Business Association?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, in previous work sessions, I've talked about the fact that the city realized over a million dollars in funding from the CARES Act. And we've talked about some possibilities for how we might use a small portion of that money as an investment in Bella Vista. Most especially Bella Vista businesses. So there has been some dialogue with the Bella Vista Business Association. They're preparing to kind of make a, a, a request for assistance from the city. And the mayor's been involved with this. That's one of the items that I, I see pushing forward with in the March meetings. So that the city council can consider whether we have the opportunity and perhaps even the responsibility. To use a portion of the CARES Act funding for investment in Bella Vista. Rather than having it all go into the general fund. How do we, how do we take care of businesses that have been suffering? And I'm still interested as well. We've had some conversation around the fact that some of our fire staff. Did benefit from some extra compensation during the pandemic and that we might, we might consider as well. Bonusing some of our first responders. And some people spoke last time about, hey, maybe would you go beyond first responders and it's everybody that's public facing? That has immediate, all members of staff that are public facing. So those are still ideas that are alive and that I hope to bring to the table in our, in our March meetings.
Okay, I would, I would mention to everybody that years ago. We as council used to support, excuse me, what in those days was called the Bentonville Bella Vista Chamber of Commerce. It, it no longer does Bella Vista. It just looks after Bentonville. And at that time, we were giving them twenty five thousand dollars a year and Bentonville was giving them a hundred thousand dollars a year. There was a challenge to that whole procedure, not just Bentonville and Bella Vista, but anybody or any city. In the state that was actually giving money to a chamber of commerce. I think it was in Pulaski County, Jason, if I remember correctly.
Well, there, there, you're, you're partially correct. There, there was a lawsuit in Pulaski County. The city, I believe it was North La Rock. Were, was directly appropriating money from the Chamber of Commerce. We in Bella Vista actually had a contract with them for economic development services. So the, the, the big lawsuit down in, in Pulaski County, they were, they were just flat out giving them the money. They didn't even go through the contract. Scenario. And at least that's my knowledge. And so we, I think we were protected from a lawsuit, but because. Of the situation down there, and that's a big place. There was a state constitutional amendment to modify our state constitution that would allow. The local government to appropriate money for economic development to entity, like, in other words, to provide funding directly to chambers of commerce. And so that potential challenge went away. So. You can directly appropriate to, to something like the Bella Vista Business Association. That's in, if it's involved in economic development. Or we can have a contract with them, certainly can always have a contract with them. Which would require them to provide certain deliverables back to us, be it in terms of reporting or progress reports or. You know, whatever it is you deem to be appropriate, we could require that. It's just up to you.
And one thing that I've been talking to Don Cross, who's the current president of it, and I think I've shared it with Steve as well, is, you know, we're looking at various key performance indicators. How are some of the measurements? How do we know that the money is being spent wisely or at least it's producing? Additional business for the businesses, is it attracting new business in? Additional business for the businesses, is attracting new business in. And she has been very, very open to having those discussions. So I'm I'm very encouraged because I can tell you. I sat on the Bentonville Bella Vista Chamber. Board of Directors for probably three or four years when I was with NCR. And they never spent a dime. Not a dime here to try and help us. And. So we just. I decided that we were never going to pay. Saw something coming in. And I know that Bob McCaslin at the time did the same thing over in Bentonville. And but I think now we have our own entity here. No, they're not a chamber of commerce. I'm not sure they. Really want to become one. I've had that discussion with them a few years ago. But Don certainly is interested. In trying to rejuvenate the the Business Association and also to expand businesses within Bella Vista. Hey, that's a great thing for us. It increases the tax base. So that's the kind of discussion that I'm having. I think, Steve, you're going to be involved in the next meeting as well. So we'll just hammer stuff out and we'll get back to you. But I'm very optimistic. I'm very pleased with the way that Don has handled this. Okay, Jerry, you have something?
Yes, as far as the use of these funds. I have an idea or suggestion for something that I think would be of benefit to the city of Bella Vista, to the residents as a whole. And whether it would qualify or not, I'm not sure, but and that is a some. One, one or two, or I mean, for each. For each side of the of the city, but. A some type of trucks, suction vehicles to deal with our leaf problems. Since. A lot of leaves in the past have been have been raked over onto vacant lots and. That's, I think, no longer with so many lots that are no longer vacant or they're. They're not available just for the neighborhood to deposit their their leaves on and. They're a difficult thing to deal with. They a real problem. So I know there are a lot of areas throughout the country where they. Residents just move their leaves to the to the ditch or to a. An area to the side of the of their property and a truck comes through and sucks or suckers up and. Chops them up and turns them into mulch and. Helps everybody, cuts down on the the burning issues. Solves a lot of problems.
Larry?
Republic, Jerry, Republic offers a yard waste pickup program and you can you contract seasonally. I think it begins April first through November thirtieth. And it's by how many dumpsters you want. We currently contract for two of those. In order to dispose of leaves at the end of the year and. Shrub and brush trimmings during the year, grass trimmings occasionally. So it's a very viable service, but it is on contract and you do it for the season. So that's a very useful tool for those who want to dispose of leaves and other. Other vegetative waste during the course of the year.
I know.
Of course, you got.
Sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
I mean, you've got so many retired individuals that because of health conditions or. That's maybe not a workable solution for them.
I think, Jerry, I just was going to say real quick, I I kind of, I like hearing the idea. I have no idea how much one of these trucks costs. I bet they're expensive, but I do think with the closing of the stump dumps. I I recognize the Republic Services for a fee, they will do that. But if it could be a city service, I think our residents would really appreciate it. Maybe this truck comes by their house twice a year. And they would know the dates. It would be broken up according to a schedule and you would know the date that the truck is coming to your street. And if the city could take on that service for its residents, I I do think it would, it would be really appreciated. And would keep us from doing what we're doing today, what so many people are doing today, and that is just pushing. The leaves back into the ravine or or putting them in plastic bags and having them taken away that way.
And I think I think you'd find that Chief Sims would also be in favor because it just adds more fuel. And God forbid that we should ever have a leaf fire. I did look at the trucks. They've got pretty heavy vacuum and one problem I see right away is a lot of residents. Have decorative rock that goes over our easement and goes right to the edge of the road. Suck up all the rocks. So that's something that we would have to consider. And then the other consideration is where do we dump all this stuff?
Yep. Mayor? Hello?
Yep.
You know, some really big cities get these super incinerators. That burns with superheated air. And reduces that stuff to just like. Fireplace ash. And then, of course, they can take it and put it over ground and stuff like that. You know, we, when we were burning the drugs over at the cop shop when I was there, we had a had a machine. That would take pounds and pounds of that stuff and superheat the air and burn it. And you could have a fifty-five gallon drum full of discarded drugs. And when you got done, you may have a pail full of ashes. There, you know, there, I've seen some and heard of some great big cities that have these super incinerator. And have superheated air blowing in and reduce the leaves to almost nothing. And then, of course, getting rid of them wouldn't be near biggest problem is what do you do now? After you suck them up in your truck?
Then you're back to a burning issue and I think.
Yeah, but it's it's enclosed.
From the residential side.
Yeah, it's, but it's enclosed.
Yeah, the P O A used those burners when they were trying to fix the stump dump.
That's right.
Very little smoke comes out of those.
And they're very expensive. They're about half a million a piece.
Oh, that may be.
Well, you know, sometimes you gotta bite the bullet.
Yes.
Yeah.
At least it'd be something we could look at.
It can something that we can certainly look at. Absolutely. Larry?
In a response to Steve's idea and and having a pickup truck, one community in Wisconsin that I am familiar with. In the spring of the year and in the fall of the year, they allow residents to put all of their debris along the curb in front of their property. And they have a time schedule for going around and vacuuming that up. I don't know what the disposal of the. Leaves are I can find out. I'm not aware of any communities down here that do that. I think Mayor Christie pointed out a very obvious problem. And that is with all of the stone landscaping. You're going to be sucking up a lot of the debris that's there. I do that with my leaf blower where I convert it into a chopper. To consolidate the amount that I put in the yard waste disposal. And it pulls up a lot of stones, sometimes pretty good size, and it damages the unit that I have. I'm replacing fans in there all the time. With a big unit, it could cause some real serious damage picking up those stones. So that's a that's a hazard for us. And creates a problem for us doing something like that, but. The yard raised waste recycling with Republic is a good option for property owners. And it's quite affordable.
John, you have a thought?
Yeah, Peter, this is just a slightly related issue. I was wondering with all the weather problems, is. Is this going to be a big budget impact as far as the expense of all the overtime and sand and salt and whatnot?
Well, the sand and salt, we still have quite a bit left, so we're okay. So I don't see any abnormal purchasing. We'll have to see what this last one looks like. Yeah, there'll be some overtime. I haven't I haven't sat with Mike to calculate it. Because frankly, it's got to be done. But I don't think it's going to be extraordinary. We did have some overtime too with the vaccine clinics, you know. Chief Sim sat down and worked it out and I can't remember what that is, but it was reasonable. It wasn't out of hand. And. I don't think it's going to be that bad, John. But what concerns me more is the damage we have that's been done to the vehicles and how much that's going to cost to fix. And then I suspect because we're running the vehicle so much that there's going to be some extra maintenance costs on them as well at the back end. And I was talking to our mechanic this morning and he agrees with that, but he's not able to. He's not able to size it yet because he's just too busy. Ensuring that they're on the road all the time.
Sure. I just wondered because we haven't had the bad weather events the last few years.
That's right.
One's been pretty dramatic.
That's right. Now, I mean, if it's if it's really going to be bad, then we have doubled the resurfacing budget and maybe we cut back on that. You know, if need be, but I I certainly hope not. Yes, Jerry?
Can I make a quick proposal that to wrap this up? And that is a suggestion that that we do a resolution commending. Mike Hudgens Papa Mike's Restaurant is experiencing some difficulties at the moment and. I would propose that we do a resolution commending he and his wife and his staff. For seventeen years of. Of service to the city of Bella Vista and to the residents of Bella Vista. He does a lot for the city. He does a lot for our community. Contributes to Make-A-Wish Foundation, the the Wall of Honor. He does lots of things for the for the community that he does not ask for any credit for, take any credit for, but. I think a a resolution commending. He and his staff for the, again, for seventeen years of commitment to the city. And the community would be very appropriate at this time.
Mr. Kelly, is that a resolution or is it better served as a proclamation?
Well, I mean, the council can can adopt a resolution if the council wants to say that. You can adopt a proclamation if you want to do that. That's up to you. You can do both. It's it's just however, however you feel about.
I I suggested resolution because I wanted, didn't really think about a proclamation, but. Whichever would be the most appropriate.
Okay. It's a good thought, good thought. Certainly a mover and a shaker in the community. Larry?
The proclamation is a is a fancy document that you sign, I believe, and something they can post. I don't know if the resolution would be quite that fancy for them. But.
It wouldn't have a seal.
This is appropriate.
You're right. It wouldn't have a seal or anything, Larry. The proclamation is a little fancier and it it certainly looks nice when it's framed.
And doesn't the mayor have, Mayor, don't you have. Capability to to issue a proclamation at your at your. Whatever you feel like is is the right thing to do.
Yes, that's correct.
We could do a, we could do a resolution and that would be the stepping stone for the mayor to issue his proclamation.
Well, the council can order the mayor to issue a proclamation.
No, no. That was not, that was not the plan, but it's it's serves to answer Jerry's Jerry's proposal. And provides the recipient with a fancier document they can frame.
Well, if I need to draft a resolution, I just need someone to get me the names. And and I can type up something and make sure it says what. What the offerer wants it to say and I can get it. If you want to do it on this next agenda, we'll need to get it pretty quick because Wayne has to. Put together the final agenda and we'll be getting that out, so.
Jerry, you want to talk with Mr. Kelly and try and put something together?
Be glad to.
I think a proclamation is the way to go.
I'd agree, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, then I, okay, then I can do a proclamation. That's not a big deal. Jerry, Jerry, can you provide Wayne because he. He puts the whole thing together for me.
Okay.
Provides some information as to things that he has done, exactly what you just said earlier?
Yes.
That'd be great. And then we can get it in the study of the proclamation.
I will get that taken care of tomorrow.
Wonderful. Okay.
Is that is that something, Mayor, that you would do like at the start of a council meeting or something?
I can do it at the at the beginning of a council meeting or if somebody thinks that it would be. Appropriate for me to read it down in Papa Mike's. I'm happy to do that, too.
All right, a suggestion. Papa Mike's has a dinner every two weeks on a Tuesday night. There's usually, even with the pandemic and stuff, forty to sixty people in attendance. If you would like mysteriously show up about six o'clock when all this starts over there, you'd have a real big audience.
Happy to do so.
So it's every two weeks and what what's the next scheduled meeting?
The next one is the twenty-third of February and then it would be two weeks after that.
Wayne, do you want to write that down, please?
Yep.
Yeah, they've got happy hour.
Tomorrow. We'll work it out.
Yeah, Wayne goes through all the time too. Yeah, Wayne knows about it. He goes all the time too. But you're looking at, you know, forty to sixty people and that'd be pretty nice in front of a crowd.
I think it'd be pretty, I think it'd be a lot of fun if all of us showed up.
Hey, now. I'd love to be there.
Hey, Jerry, why don't you get ahold of Mike? And we'll work something out and figure out, you know, if we're all going to eat what we need to put in and then. We can put it in so everybody can get fed because it's a meal kind of thing.
All right, do I need to? I just need to reach out to Mike?
Well, you don't need to tell them we're coming, but you know, see how many council members maybe want to go.
Okay.
And you know, it's ten dollars a head. So, you know, if you want to, you know, show up and then stick around for the meal. They're usually pretty good.
I hate to be that guy, but I've got to be the lawyer. If we're going to. Business, we got to notify the press and allow.
Go ahead. They don't have to come. You just got to tell them, right?
You got to give two hours notice and the public would like to attend and all that stuff. So just got to tell you.
That's good advice.
You got to tell them, but they don't have to come.
It's it's not quite the same notice though, is it, counselor? He needs to notice that there could be a quorum of councilmen there.
Yes, I mean, you could say that and that.
It's not, it's not a public notice of a meeting. It's a notice that.
Meeting, it's just. A notification that there's going to be multiple members in there to congratulate.
It's the same thing we would do if we were going as a group to the A M L.
A M L.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
For gosh sakes, guys, we just going to do a proclamation to the man commanding for his service and returning into a. You know, to another goat row in here.
Our, our, our city staff attorney keeps us honest that way.
I know how to end this. Motion to adjourn.
We don't need a motion, but thank you.
I know that, but just trying to help you along.
Okay, I'll see you Monday night. Thanks for bringing it in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.